Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion to reconvene the regular meeting?
So.
All right. It's been motioned by Mr. Ives and seconded by Ms. Luanne Johnson. So the regular session has reconvened. At this moment, I'd like to take a pledge of allegiance. If we can have everyone stand. Seeing where's our flag. It's over here. Right here. All right. Mr., and if we can have Mr. Michael Lewandowski lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. All right. Welcome, everyone. This time, I'm going to have Mr. John Greenham to stand up here and do the resolutions.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. My name is John Green and East Campus Principal. We have three resolutions this evening. The first that I am going to read is a resolution recognizing our national merit finalists. Can I please have Cameron Doublecourt, Eileen Fariter, Sophia Marcial, and Benjamin Staley please come to the front? You just turn and look that way. Whereas Cameron Doublecourt, Eileen Fariter, Sophia Marcial, and Benjamin Staley, current senior students at Lockport Township High School District 205, have earned the status of national merit finalist and have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their family, school, and community by achieving this respected status. And whereas Cameron Doublecourt, Eileen Fariter, Sophia Marcial, and Benjamin Staley were aided and guided in this achievement by their parents and Lockport Township High School teachers and guidance counselors. Now therefore be it resolved, this 21st day of March 2022, by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that Cameron Doublecourt, Eileen Fariter, Sophia Marcial, and Benjamin Staley are hereby recognized for earning the status of national merit finalist by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. May I have members of our Special Olympics basketball team join me in the front, please? Resolution recognizing the accomplishments of the Lockport Township High School Special Olympics basketball team. Whereas the Lockport Township High School Special Olympics team claimed the title of third place champions earning a bronze medal at the Special Olympics of Illinois State Basketball Tournament on March 11th, 2022, at Illinois Wesleyan University in Bloomington, Illinois. And whereas the members of the Special Olympics basketball team have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their family, school, and community by achieving this respected status. Whereas Coach Kelly Urbanski and Patrick Wolf have aided and guided the members of LTHS Special Olympics team and their successes as Lockport Township High School District 205 athletes. Now therefore be resolved that this resolution was passed on the 21st day of March 2022 by the Board of Education Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, and that the following athletes are hereby recognized for their outstanding achievements and dedication to their school and communities. Chris Alvarado, Armani Gonzalez, Frank Potter, Randy Sullivan, Derek Ballard, Brendan Lempicki, Mia Santos, Jacob Verba, Colin Dorian, Mason McCarter, Evan Schneider, Nick Filarmo, Isabella Olivero, Isabella Sola. Congratulations.
Good evening. Can I have our third place wrestlers come up, please? He's embarrassed by his haircut? I was gonna make a comment about his haircut. Good evening. Again, it gives me great pleasure to introduce our third place wrestling team. Whereas the Lockport Township High School Boys Wrestling Team competed in the IHSS Dual State Competition and claimed third place state championship on February 26, 2022 at the Grossinger Motor Arena in Bloomington, Illinois. Whereas coaches Josh Oster, Jamison Oster have aided and guided the members of the Boys Wrestling Team in their success as Lockport Township High School District 205 athletes. Now therefore it be resolved that this resolution was passed on this day, the 21st of March 2022, by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, and that the following athletes are hereby recognized for their outstanding achievements and dedication to their school and communities. Jod Alawa, Boden Bealik, Andrew Blackburn Forst, Michael Holland, Paul Cadlec, Logan Kaminski, Max Nezovich, Benjamin Markham, Shane McIntee, Carlos Munoz Flores, Troy Mutz, Aiden Nolting, Timothy O'Connor, Paul Raspe, Keegan Roberson, Peyton Roberson, Isaiah Rogers, Malik Salah, Cody Silzer, Logan Swa, Brayden Thompson, Norrie Turner, David Vukopradovic, and Liam Zimmerman. Congratulations.
All right. On behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations to our Special Olympics State Basketball Team, our Boys Wrestling Team, and our national merit finalists. Thank you. And also a personal congratulations to the parents and the families of these special students. Also, let's see. Before, do I have a motion to accept the resolutions as presented? It's been motioned by Mr. Ives and seconded by Mr. Lewandowski. Roll call. Yes. And at this point, we're going to have like a five-minute recess, but I also want to, for you to enjoy. We have coffee and cookies and some refreshments up here for all of you to enjoy. So at this point, we're just going to have a five-minute recess. Thank you.
All right, we're going to start next with our, going back to our school business. You're going to start with student reports, student government.
We should say the pledge.
Oh, we do the pledge in the.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Javi Viasnior. I'm a junior. So the first thing I wanted to talk about was recent events going on and ones going on in the future. The first one I wanted to talk about was St. Baldry's. It had a really great turnout. We were able to raise money by selling donuts at Central on Friday. Also, student government sold T-shirts during the game. It just had a really good turnout, had good energy, and it was overall really successful. Another event I want to talk about was prom. For me as a junior, I'm really excited to go to prom for the first time, and it's nice to do this in person and, you know, because it's been hard with COVID and everything has been up in the air in the past years. But yeah, I feel like a lot of people on the board and my friends in general are just really excited for prom. I also wanted to talk about my experience as a junior recently and my friends as well. We've just been stressed with like tests and SAT that's going on in the future. But on the silver lining, we've been able to prepare ourselves for this this year because we've been in person and just getting better time management and study skills. As a junior, we're also really looking forward to spring break. It's nice to finally have a break from just all the work and stress. And that's all I wanted to talk about. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you.
I know she mentioned word stress a couple of times. Is there anything you're doing to try to help mitigate some of that stress?
For me personally, in gym, my teacher, Ms. Volchich, she allows us to do yoga, which helps and the SELs also help to always just calm down. Or even going outside on a walk. That's what helps me personally.
Thank you. Stay on topic.
AST report, Ms. Karen Cooper.
We have nothing to report this evening, so.
Thank you. IASB report, Ms. Luanne Johnson.
I noticed we got the resolution book. The position, Constitution position statements and belief statements. I encourage all board members to read this book because in November, these are what we vote on. And I think you have time now if you have strong, strong resolution about something that we can actually send it to the state to challenge it and maybe even take it off the ballot. So, but read it and if you got feedback on it, let me know. Okay? And then there is a new, let's see, backup. The National School Board Association Illinois decided to disassociate itself from it, which was sad for me, but they're trying to form a new organization. What's it called, Dr. McBride?
It's called COSPA, Consortium of State School Board Associations.
So watch your email for information about it. So we can, we need to be informed about what, you know, they represent. So that's all I have.
Good evening. Just a few things to update you on for the foundation. They're still, the board is still in the process of finalizing its mission, vision, and goals. So I will update you as soon as that has been updated. We are currently also, the board is reviewing their endowment agreements as well as their policies. So that's going to be something over the next few months that they're going to be working on updating and revising. It's been a little while since that process has taken place, so we're going to diligently go through all of those documents. Scholarships for everything that the foundation gives, are there, all those applications are due on April 4th. Excuse me, an awards night. This year is May 18th at seven o'clock in our auditorium. The Alumni Association is going to be hosting their second event at Coombs Corner on April 6th. Currently, we've got about 430 people that follow the Alumni Association on social media. So it's, there's getting some nice traction in trying to get people interested about, about the alumni. So that's exciting. The foundation is going to be supporting an Easter egg hunt that the staff is going to be hosting. So we're excited to do that, come alongside them and support them on April 9th. They're all, the foundation's also supporting, covering the shipping costs. The students did a fundraiser for supporting Ukraine refugees. So some of the shipping costs to send the items that the kids had collected will be supported through the foundation this, this month. We have our golf outing. The procurement for that's in full swing. And we are currently looking for sponsors and golfers for our 23rd annual golf outing at Prairie Bluff on June 22nd. And then finally, the William and Mildred Jackson nomination forms have been in the students' hands and the staff's hands. And I'm proud to say that there's, to date, there's over 140 nominations. And I would say that that is a large increase from years past. And I would attribute to that to the students feeling so compelled and so happy with the way things have gone with school, that they are literally writing and nominating hundreds of teachers for this award. So this kid's, you know, must have felt like it's a, it's worth telling, telling someone how amazing their teachers are. So that award is given at the end of the school year. Teachers will be receiving their recognitions of the, all the accolades the students have said about them prior to that time. And then our next foundation meeting is April 6th. Any questions? Busy, busier than I thought it was going to be. I told, I'm like, this is going to be short. Great. Thank you.
We have a legislative report.
Okay, for folks in the room and then, then folks at home, this is the time of year when the Illinois state legislature is very busy. There are many bills that are moving through the House and the Senate. Not all are obviously related to education, but there are many that are related to education. And just in the agenda, a number of them I've listed, and also with the links to the actual bill itself, if you'd like to see the bill. And like I said, some have passed through the Senate or passed through the House. Some have not even made, made that journey. But there's a number that we're keeping our eyes on. Generally, these are approved or, or fail somewhere along the lines by May. The first that we're keeping our eyes on, this would have quite a bit of an impact in personnel. This is HB, House Bill 1167, which, which has moved through the Senate and the House. What, what it would permit, it was, would permit unrestricted administrative leave. And this would also be retroactive for any kind of COVID-related illness. And this is administrative leave, not sick leave. Employees receive X amount of sick days and any COVID illness would be administrative leave, not employee using her or his sick day. The provision in this that was worked out is that this only applies to people who are vaccinated. Very controversial, but that is the, the provision that, that's, that's moving through the House and Senate. It also prevent, creates paycheck protection for educational support professionals who might not be able to work if there's future remote learning. As this board knows, you selected when we went to remote learning at the beginning of the pandemic two years ago, bus drivers, educational support professionals, custodians, the board paid as we went remote. Mental health days, this is another personnel issue. This is moved around the House and Senate. It's been proposed by a senator from Plainfield. And originally, this was five additional days on top of any amount of sick days that a school district would, there's a minimum, you have to give 10 sick days. Now that's been rolled into whatever contractually a district allot its staff. So if it's 12 sick days, five of those can be mental health days, and that, that's moving along as well. Good, oh yeah, go ahead.
Would those roll over?
They would not roll over. So unlike sick days that would go to teacher retirement system or roll over, these would not roll over. But really be kind of bundled in the, in the benefit days that, that employees already have. Good news for Mr. Thompson, school construction grants, attempting to get that back on the board. We've, we've sort of seen this before. School construction grants in the Great Recession really ended. The state of Illinois participating in school construction. This is another event, effort to get in the time machine, go back to 2006 when, 2004, 2005, and 2006, those were the last school construction grants applied for. And by the time the legislator started considering them, it was the Great Recession, and that was the sunset of those construction grants. It's an effort to resurrect those. Good, good for school districts. House Bill 4813, very interesting. And that has gotten a lot of traction in the House. It's sailed through unanimously, the House. It's on its way to the Senate. It exempts food service from the bidding process. So it allows school districts to select a food service contractor, there's many of them out there, without going through the bidding process. So that's on its way to the Senate, has a, has a big impact on us. There are a number of bills, you can see them, that we're following that have not made their way either to the floor of the House or the Senate. Most of those you could bundle together. These are bills to address teacher and substitute teacher shortage. Some permitting retirees to come back and work more hours. Some easing the requirements to become a substitute teacher or to be licensed as a teacher to try to address the teacher shortage that we have now. There are the usual amount of curriculum and textbook adoption. Bills that a variety of people from Carpenter'sville to Rock Island are promoting. And none of those have moved through the floor of the House or the Senate. So we'll see, we're keeping our eye on those and trying to understand what will happen with them. And then there's a bunch of bills that are all looking at just consolidating some of the requirements we have. We do many reports, many administrators here are familiar with the Iowa system. Consolidating some of the, the reports that we have to do in that Iowa system. Suspending evaluation of principals or teachers another year. Lowering the number of professional development hours that staff are required in a particular year. And then finally, just in terms of employees, we're following to, some bereavement entitlement to at least 12 bereavement days if you are a parent or child of a lost child to suicide or homicide. And then also we're following just an employee discrimination, not employee discrimination, excuse me, sort of employee background check, really to avoid anyone who's been involved in sexual misconduct in a school district landing in another school district without a proper vetting. So mechanisms to, to vet that. Questions? Just some things that are moving through the House and Senate, getting some traction. Some that we're keeping an eye on because they have an implication for us. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. McBride. All right, communication.
Received a card from Valerie Kender, who's a bus driver in our transportation department. She thanked us for our words of sympathy due to Valerie Johnson.
Thank you. And freedom of information request, we have none. Okay, all right, public comments on agenda topics. A designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak must sign in and provide all information requested on the sign-in sheet, including the agenda item they will be addressing. The board president will call speakers up by name, announcing their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker per agenda topic will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the sign-in sheet is to obtain the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information, which will be used for any necessary board follow-up. The school district respects mutual respectability and orderly conduct among all people on school property or at a school event per Board Policy 2:230 and Board Policy 8:30. Any person who engages in conduct prohibited by this policy may be ejected from school property. The person is also subject to being denied admission to school events or meetings for up to one calendar year. At this point, we have a Mr. Tom Williams.
Good afternoon. I have a couple of things I just wanted to bring up. The first one is agenda item K1 regarding the IAM2 and IAM3 math and science teachers. I wanted to just understand, and I know this is a question, I'll send you guys all an email about this, but I wanted to know if this program is applicable to students both in honors and AP classes? Or are you planning to exclude students who are in honors and AP students from receiving this additional help? I also would like to understand a little bit more, because it was not in the agenda, what the specifics of the enrollment and de-enrollment process is for that? It was very open-ended. And my last question about this particular issue is, there's one science, one full-time employee science teacher that's funded through SRR3 funds. I just wanted to understand, is this going to be a budget item for next year? I think it looks, looks to me as if this would be a pretty good program. I would just hate for it to run out of money next year. That's the first item. The second item is regarding the, the principal report. There was quite a few different incidents that were listed on there. Seventy-five tardies to class, 278 attempted phone calls, 155 successful phone calls, 13 vaping issues. I think there's maybe a bit of double counting and possibly on purpose, but I think the focus probably needs to be on what matters. My issue is with the vaping in the, in the bathrooms, specifically after lunch. And my son actually is part of these statistics, not the vaping statistics. But after lunch, he has to go to a different bathroom to avoid vaping. So there's a couple bathrooms, I guess, right around where the lunchrooms are that are notorious for vaping. So he avoids those like the plague, goes to the other end of the school, does his business. By the time he gets back into class, he's tardy. I don't know what the process is there, but he gets written up as a tardy and then a phone call to my wife. So we may just want to take a different look at how we're possibly double counting or looking, looking at something as a complete instance versus multiple different, you know, vaping instance and a call to home and a tardy. And then the other issue is a lot of, a lot of times with the technology, the scanning in at classrooms. I'll get constantly updates. He's late, he's late. And he's in class, but the technology doesn't work. I've been in technology for 25 years. Technology is a great thing, but only when it works, right? So he has to get out of class, go to the attendance office, tell them that he's there, come back to class. And now it's like five to 10 minutes of disruption for not only the whole classroom, but to him as well. So that may be another thing that we want to take a look at. Okay? Thank you.
Can I ask how long we've had that I, I scanner?
Really this year, I mean, for all classrooms this year.
And do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the February 26, 2022 Board Demographic Workshop minutes and the February 28, 2022 Regular Board of Education Meeting minutes and the February 28, 2022 Regular Board of Education Meeting closed session minutes? Yes.
Can you separate that?
Sure.
You have to, because.
Some of us were not. That's right. Okay, so, all right, so we'll start with the first one. Motion to approve the minutes from the February 26, 2022 Board Demographic Workshop minutes. All right, it's been motioned by, was it, by Dr. Shaw and second by Ms. Luanne Johnson. Are there any questions or additions to those minutes? I'm hearing none. Roll call.
Johnson? Navarro?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
abstain.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. All right. I think we can lump the next two. All right, can we have a motion then for the February 28, 2022 Regular Board of Education Meeting minutes and February 28, 2022 Regular Board of Education Meeting closed session minutes?
Someone?
I'll second it.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Lewandowski. Are there any questions or additions to those meeting minutes? All right, hearing none. Roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Abstain.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the March 20, 22 Board member expenses? It's been motioned by Ms. Johnson and seconded by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions to those? Roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Johnson? Travis?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the February twenty twenty-two Treasurers Report?
Someone?
I'll second it.
It's been motioned by Mr. Ives and seconded by Mr. Lewandowski. Are there any questions to those? Hearing none. Roll call.
Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson? Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes.
All right, superintendent's update.
All right, a couple of things. Before I jump into the, I'm going to have Deanna Gregorich and Jeanette Castillo join us at the table and be part of my superintendent report. Before that, just a few announcements for board members. Congratulations to one of our colleagues. Mrs. Lori Cristofaro is now doctor.
Doctor.
Lori Cristofaro. So that's a big, a lot, lot of work, lot, lot, you know, just, just a very challenging thing. Wanted to draw board members' attention to, we had a meeting today. Mrs. Johnson really nominated this work, but we're partnering with Fairmont to do a really amazing planting activity on May twenty-first. Adult volunteers, student volunteers. We're calling it Seniors Will Grow. In an essence, it's volunteers earning some community service hours, getting into the community and planting, planting boxes, vegetables, things like that in the yards of seniors who have signed up for the program. So gaining a lot of momentum, looking forward to that. Mr. Navarro had a great idea, just for all board members, if you want to know who are the folks making decisions around here, just included in, in your materials for this evening, just kind of a Facebook of, of who are who? You know, administrators that you might see, you know, moving around, help you acculturate to that. Graduation, it is coming. And Dr. Greenan and his team and Mr. Bartley are fast at work planning an outdoor graduation with an indoor setup too, which you obviously hope you don't have to use, right? But spring weather, I think that's June third? Fourth? Off a day. So looking forward to that and releasing some information. In your materials that you take with, I provided you with my self-evaluation and then also the staff survey that I sent out just to any staff member who wanted to evaluate me on questions I like to ask about my work ethic or demeanor or communication or things like that. And you can kind of take a look at that as you prepare my annual evaluation. And then, as I mentioned to a few board members individually, we're keeping our eye always just on health conditions. Things have gone very well. We're about into, I think, four weeks. Last week was our first positive COVID we had with student or staff, but again, still very low. Feeling good about that, feeling that we're, we're in a safe situation. And then also just run a board member's statement of economic interest. You know, that Will County requires you to file that, requires all of us administrative positions to file that. So we will help you if you have questions about that. It's more lengthy, ask a lot more questions now. So thank you to Director of Public Relations, Jeanette Castillo, her noble assistant, Deanna Gregorich. And part of my goals is to report out to you our efforts at communication with, with our public. More important than ever, you know, two years ago, we revamped our website and it was so important right when some of the things with the pandemic happened. And what I'd like to do is allow Mrs. Castillo and Ms. Gregorich to, to walk through their annual report on communication, which you'll see. And then also, you know, after they're done, and I might interject a few things, really engage you in a conversation about where are we going with communication? Some things that you'd like to see in the future and ways that we can have reach and keep people informed and people connected and excited about what we're doing in the district. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Mrs. Castillo.
Thank you. So as you've received the communications plan, I'd like to give you a sort of a test drive into the plan. You can take a look on page three where you've, where I've actually focused on a few items under case studies, right? So to begin with, the beginning of the school year, as we all know, it has marked many difficulties related to students and across the nation. So in order to be able to enhance our student achievement and staff engagement, we've partnered with our principals and to be able to start some sort of social media, video marketing, to be able to identify those student leaders within our classrooms, both in central campus and east campus, and be able to launch with, you know, that excitement of be able to show the excitement of the students that we're back in school. What are the things that they're hearing in their classrooms? What are the, the issues that they see in the classrooms, in the buildings? How can we be able to highlight and showcase that among the stakeholders and student body and the community, right? So with that, we, we started the media campaign of starting the ship of knowledge and having some little bit of fun, along with some serious note on that. So we garnered about, I would say, quite a couple of hundred views on social media to highlight those type of videos. And since then, in late January, I thought, you know, we should do some sort of media campaign. Not only that, but just weekly videos to showcase our students, to showcase, you know, our porters. Not only to, to know, like, what is it to take, you know, to be a porter? How can we be able to embellish all of our tools that we've worked very hard in the past two years? Like Dr. McBride said, electronic communication is the most important thing. And we've been able to have the accessibility and tools and we ran with it. And I'm very pleased to be able to be part of the team with Eric and Deanna and showcase those achievements with us, with our students and our, and our staff. Along with the other video campaigns that we have done, we've noticed that there's been some staffing concerns as far as trying to help other departments to hire parapros. For example, we've also created and produced a video of, with Angela Huntington's help, what is a parapro? And being able to explain what that is, what are the qualifications? And with that, we've garnered about three hundred ninety-eight views to date. And from that video campaign, we were able to garner four applications and three of those, they were three fully hired. So we know that electronic communication, social media is, you know, it, it's, it's definitely up and running. And people are hearing, you know, there's, there's a need, there's a need. And, and we're definitely using those tools to be able to, to showcase what is it that we need to, to elevate the communication for our district. And actually, just this past week, we, we posted on social media that we are hiring and looking for bus drivers for the new academic year. And our Director of Transportation came by the office last week, two days later, and he said, I received about three phone calls from, from Facebook that they saw on social media regarding our post. And they already started an interview. So it's great to know that we're utilizing all of the tools that are necessary so we can be able to elevate and streamline different types of communication, not only to showcase our students' voice, but also the needs within the district. And furthermore, on page three, one of the other items that I'd like to focus on in the case studies is in August of twenty twenty-one, we launched with Parent Square, which, as you can all imagine, Parent Square is the software program that we utilize to be able to communicate with our stakeholders, with our parents, with our staff, with our students, to be able to utilize that if it's via email, if it's text message, especially in the, in, you know, in the momentum of that. We were testing for shield. Weekly emails were sent out, information was sent out regarding shield testing. So Parent Square has been a great asset tool to add into our communication line streams. Along with, Parent Square Crisis Go was another software program that successfully launched in October twenty-one. And that's an app that enabled administrators to respond more promptly in regards to, you know, reports that students or, you know, parents within the community would like to submit regarding any issues or concerns that they have seen or heard in the, in central campus or east campus. Along with the same timeline in October of twenty twenty-one, we also launched in conjunction with a new Protect Our Porters webpage, which I'm sure you've probably noticed on our website, along with, you know, different types of videos that we're able to showcase as well. And really just streamlining the, elevating the communication tools that we have. And on to page four.
Just wanted to take a, you know, just all of those things. Just if there are any board member questions or, you know, Crisis Go, I think has been critical just to any kind of bullying, harassment, safety concern, social emotional concern. And then Parent Square has allowed us to be a little bit more nimble, especially in tough situations where texting is a better way to reach out to families. Of course, email. Also, what we appreciate about Parent Square is unlike our previous School Messenger, folks can interact with email messages either, either commenting back more easily or just showing their interest in it. But questions, just board member questions for Deanna or for Jeanette on any of those, those case studies this year?
The, I, I think they're both great. Parent Square and Crisis Co, it's great, it's great communication. Have we done any, we can't assume everyone has internet access. Everybody doesn't have a smartphone of all our student population. Is there any study or any, any verification that we're making sure they're all getting, they're all getting the information? They may have to get it a different way. Some students I know that go to the library. That's how they access these things. So I didn't know, is there any, have we, we can't just assume they're all getting it.
Right. So the neat thing about Parent Square, we also see the analytics portion where, say, if an email was sent and it got bounced back, we're able to see which actual record that was. So we can be able to update that record or perhaps call that parent and say, we've noticed that, you know, the emails are bouncing back and you're not receiving our communication. So they not, not only receive an email notification, but a text message as well. So we're hoping that one of the two ways.
That's great.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One of the challenges we face, I'm a culprit of this in my own high school life, is updating parent cell phones and emails. Those all change for all of us. And we're only as good as the information that we have. So that's why in the summer, registration is so important, just to check that information because we text or we email what we have on file on Infinite Campus. So this summer, one of the outages that we'll do is please verify your information. Because inevitably, when, for example, Kathy Maxwell receives calls, I'm not receiving this information, we'll check the email. It's an older email, the person changed jobs or changed email provider and that's the culprit. Yeah, go ahead, thanks.
All right.
And jump in anytime, board members, if there's, there's something that's interesting to you.
So something that you've noticed slightly also different compared to last report is we've included a QR code on page four. And that QR code is also on the back of your business cards that you received a couple of weeks ago, if not earlier this year. So that QR code definitely brings you and it links it to our main website. So it's more, again, of the transparency, the communication, the accessibility of being able to obtain our website, any information off of a smart device. And also listed in the report, you can also see on page nine, what I really like about part of the report is the analytics portion of social media. And the social media analytics of it, as you can see, our followers have increased, I would say at least double from the past year, and engagement has been quite impressive. I was just taking a look at our social media engagement of a thirty-second, you know, live video celebrating in the hallway of our Special Olympics basketball team, and that garnered about almost ten thousand views. And that was just thirty seconds on a smart device. So it's, you know, it's really going the way of changing communication, of having the accessibility on a smart device, having all of that information easily and readily to students, to staff and the community. So as you can see here, the, on page nine, the engagement, the top post by engagement rate in twenty twenty-one, it lists three. And the first one is of our celebration with the championship of the football team. And that was just, I was just telling Deanna, I'm like, I think we should go Facebook Live. Have we done Facebook Live before? And she's like, no. And I'm like, let's do it. So it, it was one of the top-rated engagement rates of Facebook. So that's the neat thing of being able to go Facebook Live, transfer that as well to Instagram or vice versa. And, you know, also, a lot of parents, they don't have the opportunity to come to different events. And it's really nice when they're either shopping or they're at another student, you know, event or game. They can be able to see it on their smartphone. And on page ten, I also included the results and statistics on Thought Exchange. As you are all aware, we do surveys throughout the year. From March to now, we've done about twenty-one exchanges and you can see the participation rate has increased a little bit more than last year comparing to the number of Thought Exchange surveys that we've released. Any questions for now?
And all four of these platforms allow outbound communication, but they also allow participants to interact with each other, which is something that allows us to see how people are interacting, interacting not only with the media, but interacting with each other. Where are you at in your presentation? We can open it up to board members?
Definitely, we can open it up to board members. Any questions, something that you would like to dig deeper in? Something that I perhaps missed or you would like me to explain a little bit more?
Or areas where the board would like to, to, to do some work? You know, so you know, last week in your, in, a few ideas I threw out, board coffees or walk-in talks. Even discussion at board meetings can be really a rich, you know, source of communication. And then one of the things we've been investigating, especially with mobile technology, is the development of an app. As most people users know and hear, you go to a website. Our website, do the work of Eric Slager, who's part of the communications team back there, is actually a very mobile-friendly website. But oftentimes, an app designed for an Android phone or a, an iPhone interacts much better because it's specifically for that platform. So just, you know, things the board might be interested, you know, Mr. Navarro, I saw you were interested.
I was interested. It's always good to have multiple ways of communication, not just like one. Because it's about getting, there's an idea called like information stragglers. Just because you're really good at communicating one way doesn't mean that you'll be able to communicate with everybody. So some people will prefer texts, some people will prefer emails, some people will get most of their information through Facebook. We're definitely living in a different world because there's so many different ways to access information. That I, the biggest irony of our day and age is that there's so much information that it's hard to figure. It's not that there isn't any information, it's that there's so much information, it's hard to get the necessary information out to everybody else. And what is obviously like, how, how can people misinterpret it and stuff? I'm just curious, so it is you two who runs and makes the posts, makes the descriptions to the posts, right?
Deanna, Eric and I.
Okay.
Yep.
I was just curious. Is any, do you get a lot of messages? Are there a lot of, are there a lot of people messaging your, and who replies back to those messages?
Right, so it varies depending on the social media post. Obviously, it's, it's like a combination of parents and students. As far as messages, it's, I would probably say more parents than students. You get more of the engagement, you know, in likes or shares with students compared to parents messaging like, thank you so much or congrats, or even just commenting on our Facebook or on Instagram. So, yeah, we do receive messages.
So it is you three also who replies back to them?
We see them. Do you want to say something? Go ahead.
Um, we actually have, uh, our platform set up to let them know that we don't monitor the messaging on a regular basis, that if they would like to reach in, to email us directly in the PR office.
Okay.
In your, um, social media highlights, you talk about your tracking, you know, the followers. Cause I remember when, Deanna, there were ten. And, uh, but these, these followers, they're all, because there are many Twitter accounts out there that's the baseball team, the football team, the boosters, they're all over the place, which is great. But these statistics are just for the high school.
Correct.
Not, not the individual organizations, and we're not, we're not tracking those. This is just, it's your followers, your hits for directly to them.
Specifically for Lockport Township High School District, yep.
Okay, thanks.
I think ultimately what I would like to see is just see these numbers grow, which I think is what everybody would want to do, because I could just imagine a parent sitting there and, and flipping through their Facebook at night going, oh, I need to order the cap and gown tomorrow. Like, and Facebook is probably going to be the place that they would see it before an email or something like that. So ultimately, if we can get the word out there that these pages are there, that'd be awesome. I know that they're, the word's out there, but.
Right.
And, and to that end, another strategy that, that we're considering is something that hasn't been done in years, that's the direct mailing to every taxpayer in Lockport Township. Brief succinct encapsulating what's happened in the past two years, but also containing easy things like a QR code or a URL that you can connect with Twitter, you can connect with our website. Our website still remains, and that might be for some folks in here, old school, still remains, uh, the most interactive and most frequently visited, uh, part of our communications, uh, that we do. So we try to load a number of things, the student videos that Mrs. Castillo mentioned, you know, Porter Voices are all loaded up there, Board of Meeting Briefs that we do are loaded up there so that people can see those as well. But it still remains the most visited portion of, of what we do. Also, you know, something with the, the hiring of Eric Slager, we brought on, it almost just happened, uh, just keeping the process of live streaming our board meetings going. We're no longer required to do that, uh, you know, but, but it seems to be really good to enroll people who might want to come back to the board meeting because it's archived and recorded, can always be seen, or, uh, want to tune in right now and just see what's happening at the board meeting.
At some point can we see some analytics as far as how many people are watching board meetings?
Sure, because that, that, yeah, that'd be a great suggestion. That's on our YouTube channel.
Mm-hmm.
And, and it ranges, usually in a meeting we can, you could peek and at one moment there's eighteen, at another moment there's two hundred.
So you have a YouTube channel?
We do have a YouTube channel.
Okay. I, I assume you guys run it too, or who, who runs our YouTube channel?
Uh, really, uh, Eric Slager, he's running it right now. Uh, we're running off of our YouTube channel, um, you know, right this second.
You, you said you're, you're doing, you're thinking about doing a district mailer?
Mm-hmm. To every taxpayer in, in our attendance area.
Can I also suggest that you include the new and improved Alumni Association in that mailer?
We would, because I would also include for the board.
Cause I'm not all taxpayers anymore.
Right, that's true, that's true. And I would include for the board, you know, we had Mrs. Adolf, um, did her presentation. But also you're thinking about the LTHS Foundation. That's another way to communicate with, with the public. The Foundation, the Alumni Association, we received an email today, for example, uh, opening up maybe the possibility of partnering with an organization called Young Hearts for Life. What's Young Hearts for Life? Young Hearts for Life does free cardiac screening for teenage, uh, students that prevents sudden cardiac arrest. Every once in a while you open up your paper, you will see some sixteen or seventeen-year-old who had sudden cardiac arrest, uh, seemingly unexplainable for students this age, but strangely enough, not as unusual as you might think. Probably in a school population our size, if we did Young Hearts for Life, we would probably identify about thirty students who would need some kind of cardiac, um, intervention that they didn't even know about, just as they're growing. And so the, the Foundation, but also the Alumni Association, reaching out to the community and engaging and connecting with the community, uh, as well, is another, another form of, uh, public relations and communication.
Any other questions?
No, thank you very much. Yeah, great job. Thank you, uh, Deanna, thank you Jeanette, and thank you Eric, thanks for your, 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 your hard work. And that is, uh, my report.
I used the QR code and it came up.
It didn't come up? Oh, oh, it did? Okay, I'm sorry, Mrs. Johnson. Thank you for verifying the technology. Uh, as Mr. Williams said earlier, it's only good if it works.
That's right.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to our consent agenda items. I just need a motion to approve the consent agenda items number two to number eleven.
Second.
Spin motion by Mr. Travis and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions to those consent agenda items? Hearing none, roll call.
Navarro?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Isles?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes.
Moving on to our action consideration items, just need a motion to approve the license staff positions for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year.
And with your, uh, permission, he's, you know, usually generally staffing, um, and some of the questions that Mr. Williams asked, I was gonna ask Mr. Kondari and Mrs. Christopher just to share with the board a little bit of thinking, these are, um, math plus and science plus are two new positions. Uh, you know, don't want to get in the way, uh, take your vote, but want to make sure that you have a clear sense of what, what these are, uh, why they are, how they're funded, uh, what the strategy is, i- i- is here. And, and then also we'll probably just go right into a little bit of information about how we derive this year's, uh, the staffing level for next year, if that's okay.
All right. So, good evening, um, you have this proposal in front of you because, you know, we want to ensure that all of our students can achieve at the highest of levels and that we know that providing support for students within the confines of the school day, not asking them to stay after school or come before school, is the most effective strategy. Also, the model that we're suggesting here was supported by our audit from the District Management Group, um, that we conducted over last year and we gave those results to you in June. And this standard that they suggest is that, um, to ensure support for students, it's, you need to have support that is provided by staff with deep content expertise and training. So obviously hiring our, uh, using our teachers to provide the support. They sit on these math teams every Wednesday morning, right? So they can talk about what is it that the students don't know? And then the teachers can adequately prepare and provide reteaching strategies through a variety of methods and then retesting strategies during this time. Having a strong mathematical ability supports our students, um, with greater opportunities in life. Um, all the stuff we're doing around college and career readiness, but also it better prepares them for things like the SAT test, which we know is a gateway to opportunity. So what will happen is we will use kind of strategic methods. We'll look at who are students that we know are struggling with a particular concept. And those students will be rotated in to this, um, math plus section that's opposite their lunch. And the teacher will do some reteaching and then retesting. And then if the student is successful, the student might rotate out into a study hall and then other students will be allowed to be served, um, in that manner. And so the, because we have this kind of fluid plan for how students would move in and out, it's kind of on a two-week rotation, a lot of our students can benefit from it because we all struggle with, um, any kind of content or class at any different times. So it's an opportunity that would be available to our students in, um, IM two and IM three. And you know, we've had a lot of different kinds of supports already at Central. And so we're trying to create those supports here in math as well. We know students need the three years of math for graduation. I'll pause there and see if you have any questions about the math support.
If the board might recall, you know, we'll also, um, move into this with science, but math and science have been two markers that we've noticed. Difficulty, um, concepts not fully internalized in math or science, or in science, three years of science, has been clearly a marker, math and science performance, for, for performance on the SAT. And then that opens up doorways for future opportunities. So, uh, addressing that. You might ask yourself as board members, why isn't this taking place in Compass? Uh, well, we also recognize that students don't just have a science or a math class. They have other classes, they might need to seek assistance during Compass from a world language teacher, from an English teacher. So if we were to dedicate, um, their Compass time only to math or science, that would limit their ability to seek help from other teachers. And that's not something that we would want to do. And I'd really echo what, uh, Dr. Christopher said, that, you know, everyone here can, can probably say there's a time that they've struggled at their work, time that they've struggled academically. And rather than waiting to a grade comes out or waiting four or five, six weeks till that's detected, picking up on that earlier, reteaching the concepts, so the class just doesn't move away from students who are struggling.
So if a student needs assistance this year, all right, and they want to go during their advisory periods, what options are open to them at, at this time?
So if I'm a student in, in like IM, IM two, is that what you're asking me?
Just, I'm saying in general, so I, I'm not doing well in my, um, you know, my math class and I need to just go see somebody during my study hall, where, where do I go currently?
A bunch of different programs entitled.
Yeah, that, that's, that's one of the challenges. We don't have a lot of tutoring support right now. The titled tutors that we wrote in the grant to provide additional supports, weren't able to find them.
Okay.
So, I mean, but the student could also go to Compass time, but, you know, that's, um, as Dr. McBride said, you have multiple classes, um, a teacher might have a variety of students in there. So this is supposed to be really focused around that area to provide students with the support. Did I answer your question, Dr. Shaw?
Yep.
Okay.
And that's during the day after school, there are other, you know, um, opportunities. We have kitchen table and, and, and other, you know, programs we've had in place, but a lot of times students can't go to those. They have, you know, other obligations.
So if we're talking like a specialized class, like a calculus AP class, that would be utilized during Compass time?
Yeah.
Could be.
And, and of course, there's always seeking out your teacher before, after school, but, but there's limits to that. You know, if you're taking the bus, you arrive at a particular time. After school, you might have to take that bus home, uh, it's only transportation. Or maybe you're an athlete or you're in act, in an activity. So it's really trying to locate, um, the help in the day, in the moment. I think, Mrs. Johnson, I, I think you had a question as well.
Uh, yeah, I know, I think it starts next year. It starts next year, I think.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Where if students test at a certain level, they would be put in like AP classes? For certain classes? So, I'm in an AP class, I got put in that AP class, now I'm struggling. Would they use this to help them keep up or an additional support? How would that work?
So I think what you're talking about is the six colon one three five acceleration plan.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, that goes into effect in the fall of twenty-three. And there's, there would be caveats, right? Because there's, there's questions about like, how would we communicate with the parents with regards to automatic placement? Um, but certainly if that goes into effect, we want to have good, robust support systems that we planned out to support students.
And just to remind board members, that's a, a, a state act, uh, that passed the House and Senate. Uh, one of the biggest challenges is if a student tests at a certain performance level on the spring testing that we have annually, will be April thirteenth and fourteenth, we'll do spring state accountability testing. And the idea is that if a student performs well on that, that student can automatically enroll in a higher ability class. That is a great idea. The difficulty is oftentimes the state does not get us our test results to make that movement until school has actually started. And that's something that the state is going to, going to have to figure out. Conversely, in-house, we're looking for those opportunities already. And Dr. Christopher hasn't talked about science, um, but we recognize, uh, the need to move students who show aptitude, show ability into more challenging courses that, that we know that they can do, but they might need a little bit of help just as they start out on that journey. Uh, math plus, science plus is also part of that as well, and maybe just have you pick up on that. And I do want to make sure that we give Mr. Kondari, um, a little bit of a chance to talk about the landscape of trying to, right now in these days, find tutors and, and support personnel. Yeah, Mr. Navarro?
Did you guys say what our expected, um, amount of students who would sign up for these would be?
So students would be directed to put in there, it's not just a sign up like Compass is, right? Sometimes the teacher will say to the student, you have to come to the Compass. Sometimes the student will sign up. This is something where we'd put students in there instead of a traditional study hall. They would rotate out into a traditional study hall. Or if they're in a traditional study hall and experiencing some challenges, that's when we can rotate them in.
So how many kids are being rotated, like in total?
I, I think we're looking right now, Mr. Navarro, at about fifteen students, but it's, uh, over an A period and a B period. Cause you know, we have lunch and then study hall, so fifteen students could be serviced by the teacher while the other, other students are at lunch and then you, or in study hall or in lunch and then flip flop it.
So in a single period, uh, lunch period, about thirty students.
So just for clarification, I'm not doing well in my math class, um, and it's, there's certain metrics, obviously, that you're going to have to get somebody rotated in. I then get placed in the study hall to get it, get math help and get back up to where I need to be. And then once I'm there, there's going to be another set of metrics. Once I am moved out, back to my regular study hall because I've caught up with what I needed.
Yep.
Okay.
But like, what's the grand total of the amount of students that would?
It's gonna depend on grades and how students are doing.
Okay. So we haven't figured that out yet?
So what's the difference between going to Compass and going to the F? I guess I'm confused.
I, I think sometimes we see students, we know students need the three years of math for graduation, so we want to provide support within the school day to get them there. And if they are going to Compass every day for their math teacher and they have trouble someplace else, they can't access it.
Okay. This'll help with the three years of math and science?
Right, and that, and one, one major difference that I would make is, you know, let, let's say in, in IM two, students are struggling with quadratics. In Compass, they might go to a teacher to get help. In math plus, they would have a reteaching of that lesson, a reassessment of that lesson to make sure that they understand quadratics. If it's chemistry, the toughest thing in chemistry is stoichiometry.
Yep.
You can't move forward unless you have stoichiometry. Reteaching that stoichiometry to make sure you can move forward. In, in Compass, it's not really stylized as a, as a, as a brief reteach or a new lesson.
So this is the field of gap, and if you didn't get it the first time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good.
Yes, so, and, and you could have additional, like, learning something like quadratic equations might take some students longer to get that, right? So you might need, you know, having a little bit longer duration will support students who need the extra time.
So when we talk reassessment, is that then going to impact their grades and when they're reassessed in this program? Okay.
Or, unless we could get really, unless it's a, it was just a formative piece, like we placed you in there. Yeah. You good?
Yeah, or science, however, both of you just?
We'll do science and then we'll jump into the personnel and the funding personnel.
Yeah, so we wanted to do a mo, a similar model in science because we know the state is moving towards a mandate that will require two years of lab science, which would be biology and chemistry. But then we also know that three years of a lab science, biochem physics, is a gateway to achievement for most of our, for students. Because it helps you get to the fiftieth percentile or higher on some of these more standardized tests. But in addition, aligned to our college and career readiness because it opens up a whole host of post-secondary opportunities for students. So because we're gonna move some more students into chemistry, we want to make sure we're gonna have the support there for them. So we're asking for, um, to, to mirror this in a chem plus also. And we're moving a few students into physics, so a section of the physics plus again, where the teacher has the opportunity and plans and reteaches on a cycle and then retest the students to exit them or keep them in if they need additional time and support to master a concept. Any questions on the science part of it?
This is open to basically all students, right?
Well, they're gonna be assigned, but this would be chemistry, so any student in chemistry and the physics section.
That was your question.
I think I'm good, unless you have any questions? I think I'm good, unless you have any questions?
So what, what we were challenged with during this staffing shortage that, that, you know, we're experiencing in all areas. We had the funds for Title I tutors, similar to what we have at Central. Central, we have the math tutors. They have a math lab, math tutors. It's established, it's been there. Students from, at Central come from seven feeders plus other school districts. So we use the math lab to, you know, get those students back and and all on the same page because they're coming from so many different feeder schools. And it's established, it's been there. Where we had the funding in the, and we have the funding in Title I. It's just finding those, those folks to come in and and be the tutors, okay? So what we're, what we're proposing and what we've worked out with the help of Stephanie, of course, is to fund the math position through Title I funds and then fund the sci, a science position through Esther three funds, okay? We know grant money is not always going to be there, okay? So we look at many, many different parts of this. One part that I definitely, you know, keep an eye on from year to year and and sometimes month to month is retirements of staff, okay? Lockport, we are blessed that the, the quality teachers that we hire tend to stay, okay? We don't have a lot of turnover. Our turnover comes from retirements usually. Over the course of the next three years, we have three math teachers and four science teachers who are retiring, okay? So, so with that, if, if, you know, attrition bears its head, we may be able to use one of those positions to continue on with the program, assuming the program is, is successful. And we'll reevaluate the program as, as we go forward.
And just a note on, you know, you hear these things, Title I, Esther. Title I, longtime federal grant designed to support reading and mathematics education. And then Esther, Esther is designed, initially Esther, you might have heard of this, Esther one, Esther two is initially designed to help school districts with some of the, the impacts of staffing and personal protective gear and, and everything that went physically into the pandemic. Esther three is really designed for any types of, of, of learning gaps, any types of innovative schooling that a district might do. And what, you know, I would share with the board is, both of these are allocated based on the size and the number of our students. Title I also has to do with how many low-income learners are in our district. The way that these grants work is they exist to lower the tax burden on local taxpayers. If not used, every year they get reconstituted and they're shipped to other districts if, if they're not used. And so using them wisely, using them in a way that lessens the tax burden on our local taxpayers is important. And then also knowing that they just flow, they're redistributed in the northern Illinois region to other districts if, if, if they're not used. So using them wisely and timely, awfully important. Questions, you know, I got in the way of Mrs. Lopez Caniva and a vote, but wanted to make sure you had a chance to ask questions, fully understand it, have access to Dr. Christopher and Mr. Kandari. And really a realization on our part that we could keep on trying to hire external tutors. But we have so many qualified staff members right here. And if we shift our staffing to put them in a position to help students and reteach students, we can catch some of those gaps in knowledge sooner. Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Johnson?
Maybe this is for the next part. How many F T U's are we talking? Are we talking, and one other question, is it just for here or is it for here and Central?
Math plus and science plus is just for East Campus. It'd be one point oh math plus, one point oh science plus.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
You'll need a motion to approve.
Okay, so I just need then a motion for to approve the licensed staff position for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year.
I'll move.
Second. It's been motioned by Mr. Ives and seconded by Dr. Shaw. Role call.
Ives?
Yes.
Travis?
Yeah.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. All right, now, do I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three license, licensed personnel staffing?
I'll move.
I can second that. It's been motioned by Ms. Johnson and seconded by Ms. Lopez Caniva. All right, any other further questions on that?
Yeah, and I just asked Mr. Kandari and Dr. Christopher to stay in case you had
any questions.
Questions about staffing levels next year. As the board knows, these are driven by student requests for courses and meeting those requests.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Johnson? Johnson?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. We have our policy considerations.
Thank you, great. While Mr. Dusterhoff pulls up the slide, as you might recall, press one oh eight. It's probably going to take us till June to work through it. And this is the outcome. Apologize for the, maybe we will go in Mach twenty one. I will speak as quickly as I can. Sorry for the typo. But this is a second group of, of policies. Some policies, as the board knows, and what is PRESS, PRESS is an organization. It's an arm of the Illinois School Board of Education, an arm of the Illinois Association of School Boards that makes recommendations. Once there's legislation, how can school boards have policy that matches that legislation? So that you as a Board of Education are operating in compliance. Some policies, there's flexibility. The first two groups, the group that you approved last February and this group are really in response to laws that have been written. And the first reading is an opportunity for the public to see it, for the board to see it and to ask questions, to have good discussion. So Mr. Dusterhoff is going to help us. Uniform grievance procedure. What this does, an interesting thing, we just talked about communications. This updates, it includes in the uniform grievance procedure. This is a procedure that, that really anyone can use to file a complaint, a formal complaint based on many things, from sexual harassment to unfair treatment. And this requires something else, is that we have to come into compliance with web content accessibility guidelines. You might say, what is that? But there are certain colors, certain typefaces that are very difficult for certain people who have certain disabilities, especially visual disabilities, to see and to access. I'm one of those people. I have red, green color blindness. So sometimes I go to websites and I can't distinguish things because of that. So this policy, someone could grieve it, saying, you know, our website is not in compliance. And I, and if you have a question, please just let me know. Go ahead, Mr. Dusterhoff. Three colon forty. This relates to abused and neglected child reporting. But it gives, gives me special reporting abilities for anyone who is either, doesn't fulfill their abused and neglected child reporting or has committed some kind of offense, someone on staff. There are things that I have to report to the state to make sure that if that is the case, I have to report that. Previously, it was the state superintendent that did all the reporting. Now it would be myself reporting to the state board, teacher retirement system, you know, on your behalf. Four colon one seventy five specifically, all of us who are employed are, have a background check, criminal history check, and the superintendent is not exempt from that. Previously, there wasn't board policy mandating that. You know, I would strongly recommend anyone that the board hires completes a background check. So this is requiring the school board president to make sure that before superintendent is hired, that that appropriate background check is done. I remember very well Mr. Kandari's office doing my fingerprints. So that's very appropriate. Substitute teachers, what this, oh yeah, Mr. Navarro, thank you.
Mr. Kandari, who conducts these checks?
His office, HR does criminal background checks through the state police. And the way that it's done is through fingerprinting. So we electronically take fingerprints in Mr. Kandari's office. Those fingerprints go down to the state police. And then the state police, along with name, social security number, address, teacher license, do a report back if there's any criminal background for the employee, the future employee. And we do that before you approve that employee. Substitute teachers, five colon two twenty. This expands, there are limits on retirees for how much they can substitute. And this expands it to five hundred hours a year. So basically, in a teacher shortage, taking advantage of retirees who might be willing to come in. We have a number of retirees this year that are subbing for us. I just saw wonderful faculty member Ellen Green, who's been doing an amazing amount of subbing for us. She's been fantastic. Thanks, Mr. Dusterhoff. Seven colon seventy really updates a few things that we have to do. We have to be very specific in communicating our absenteeism, intruency policy. That kind of went, you heard a little bit earlier from some public comment about, you know, what, what is that policy? And there has to be access to that. Also, this incorporates the, for students, on the student side, there is state legislation that is passed for five mental health days as an additional reason why a child can be excused from compulsory education. And then finally, religious reasons. It, written, notice from parent that a child, either for a religious practice or a religious holiday, eat al-fat, yawn kapoor, can be exempted from school. Additionally, specifically, student pregnancy. And this puts all of those students taking mental health days, religious observances, pregnancy, access to being excused and access to work and assignments. This builds on it, seven colon eighty, that students may be excused for both religious holidays, not only the holiday, but perhaps there's a practice related to that holiday if their religion on that particular day excludes a secular practice like going to school. Thanks. Exemption from physical education, very similar. This does allow parents to request that a child can be exempt from physical education if the student is engaged in fasting, Ramadan, if you are the Jain religion, the Catholic religion does religious fasting. Student child can be exempted upon written notice from parent or guardian. Yeah, Mr. Navarro.
So how, how does the fasting thing work? Are we only accepting like fasting during certain holidays? Or can they just say like, yeah, I'm going on a fasting thing?
Well, you know, there's, there are specific reasons. In school code, children can be excused from school for, they're sick, they're attending a funeral, a medical appointment or a dental appointment or orthodontist appointment. Now, mental health and then also religious holidays. On all of those, it's, it's rare that we require proof. You know, we hope that someone who's calling is telling us this is the case. My child is sick, we have a funeral, my child is in a religious practice, my child needs a mental health day. Obviously, if it becomes chronic, then we begin to ask questions because that, and that becomes chronic absenteeism or truancy. So we just, you know, when families call in, those are the, the five reasons that a child can be excused. And, you know, we'll, we, we accept that from our families. Yep, great question. Restrictions on publications for high schools, so very important in that student journalists have a broad free speech right that derives from the case, the Supreme Court case, Tinker versus Des Moines. And there has been a great deal, especially in the era of social media, that's gone to federal court, appeals court, and gone actually to the Supreme Court. What this policy does is it gets very, very specific on three things. It defines obscenity, slander, and libel. So that it's understood by student publications exactly what, what those are. And although this policy gives a wide berth to student publications in terms of what they can publish, it defines more specifically for the board, what are the rights and responsibilities of student journalists? In essence, at the same time, student journalists have a wider berth to publish with less control by administrators in the Board of Education. It also gives the Board of Education control because it gives specific definitions to what these types of responsibilities are for your student journalist. For example, responsibility to the truth and what libel and what slander and obscenity actually are. Those were not in, in previous seven colon three fifteen in the state of Illinois. So let me pause there. I think that's the last policy. But I think that really tightens that policy, that final policy. Any questions? It's a first reading. We won't take a vote today. And obviously, over the next month, if you have questions about any of those, just, just let me know.
Thank you.
Public comments not on agenda items. A designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics not listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak must sign in and provide all information requested on the sign-in sheet, including the topic they will be addressing. The board president will call speakers out by name, announcing their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker, per agenda topic will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the sign-in sheet is to obtain the correct spelling of the name and speaker and contact information, which will be used for any necessary board follow-up. The school district respects mutual respect, civility and orderly conduct among all people on school property or at a school event per Board Policy two colon two three oh and Policy eight colon three oh. Any person who engages in conduct prohibited by this policy may be ejected from school property. The person is also subject to being denied admission to school events or meetings for up to one calendar year. Mr. Shaw, can you keep the time going?
I have it.
Oh, yes, okay. And we will start with Ms. Teresa Hayes.
Hello, my name is Teresa Hayes and I am here again to discuss and highlight mental health of our community. First, I'm going to reference a New York Times article that came out in February of twenty twenty one. Since the first coronavirus case was confirmed in the United States, the number of people in need of mental health services has surged. But many have been left waiting for available doctors. I'm paraphrasing here to keep the time short. Providers who have given mental health to our citizens have been in short supply for many years and they're stretched thin. One doctor was quoted as saying, never at any time in my practice have I had a five-person lady, waiting list until now. Another doctor from Austin, Texas, said he recently had to hire an additional nurse practitioner to help care for more patients. I'm busier than ever and I just don't have the room, I'm full. In August of twenty twenty, the CDC published a report which concluded that in late June, forty percent of the adults in the United States have been struggling with mental or subs, mental health or substance abuse issues and rates of depression and anxiety had risen since twenty nineteen. In an addition, in, in addition, a study of almost one hundred and ninety million ER visits found that visit rates for mental health conditions, suicide attempts, drug overdoses and child abuse and or neglect were higher in mid-March through October twenty twenty than they were in twenty nineteen. This particular article goes on to advise the struggle that many go through to find adequate care. Every person in this article was over eighteen years old. All their stories were vastly different, yet very similar. A few more statistics to add to this. A study by the World Health Organization found that between thirty and eighty percent of people with mental health issues don't seek treatment. These are nineteen, nine, these are twenty nineteen numbers. This is pre-pandemic numbers, so imagine what they are now. The US has one of the highest suicide rates in the industrialized world. Suicide is the tenth leading cause in the United States. It is the fourth leading cause of death for adolescents fifteen through nineteen globally. In twenty nineteen, there was an estimated three point five million who planned a suicide, one point four million suicide attempts and over forty seven thousand deaths by suicides. There's obviously many contributing factors, psychiatric disorders, substance abuse, family history or depression, loss of a parent through death or divorce. history or depression, loss of a parent through death or divorce, feelings of social isolation, and of course, bullying. What I bring forth today is a challenge, a challenge to do better, a challenge to help our upcoming adults that are coming out of our schools and into our community. We ask, we need to ask our schools what we are doing to combat these issues now. Our kids and future adults spend seven-plus hours in our school buildings, Monday through Friday. Are we limiting screen time? Not with each child being assigned a Chromebook? Are we supplying healthy fruits, vegetables, options in the cafeteria? Well, we built a coffee bar, but I don't think that counts. Do we give our students time to disconnect, to unplug, to recharge? No, only if you're lucky, otherwise, your student, your study hall is a forced quiet time for more work and more screen time. As the LTHS community who is striving for Together We Succeed, I think it is time for us to truly come together, not for one specific group, but for the entire student body, and realize that we must give our future adults tools and avenues to combat these issues they will most likely have as they get older and become adults, working and raising children. If we can build a coffee shop to teach life skills, then we should be able to build something that fosters and teaches mental health, and healthy ways to deal with life stresses everyone will face at one time or another. I am sure with some initiative, we can supply avenues and teach stress and anxiety management rather than watch these young adults try to find treatment later, as we've just learned, it's not out there. A quick Google search will give you many ideas. Let's just talk about a couple of them. Number one is breathe. When do our students get to breathe? When do they get to go outside, maybe see the sunshine, get a breath of fresh air? Usually not in those seven hours. Another one down the line is set time for yourself. Do we allow our students to unplug? Do we allow them a moment? I don't believe that we do. Obviously, eat plenty of fresh fruits and vegetables. I think that as a whole, we need better choices in our school cafeteria, we need better choices for food. Talk it out. Do we truly employ enough counselors in this school? And especially, are these the right counselors for these kinds of issues? These kids are going to grow up, and they're going to have these issues. Okay, that's fine. So I'll jump to the next one, a change of scenery, go outside. We have a courtyard, are we utilizing it? Do we utilize what we have in this school to give our students the best, the best avenue and tools to move forward? So I just ask that we please think about this issue as it affects everyone in our community. As the newest statistics is, three out of every 10 people in America will experience some form of anxiety or depression in their lifetime. A clickable virtual relaxation room, or a clickable link to a suicide hotline on the LTH website is not enough. We must do better, then we will succeed together.
Next, we have Ms. Jill Johnson.
Hi, I was unable to attend the last board meeting, but I was listening to part of it, and I just wanted to address some things that cannot happen again. You talked about the return-to-school plan that was passed in August, and if our numbers go up, yes, we will go back to that. We can never do that to children again. We can't. My, my two children that attend this district were very affected by this. And I'm speaking for mine. I'm sure there are other children that, remote learning was probably great for them. For my children, it was not. My son is an AP honor student. For the first time ever this past semester, he got a C, which is not the end of the world, but I know why it happened. He was in a winter sport, they were forced to go on a pause because there was an outbreak. I think two kids tested positive for COVID, and that's considered an outbreak. Then he had to quarantine because he is not vaccinated. His other teammates did not have to quarantine because they got the vaccine. Funny thing, couple weeks beforehand, some of those same kids were positive COVID, couple weeks later, some of those vaccinated kids were positive COVID. Guess who never tested positive? My unvaccinated child. I'm not saying it can't happen, but for him to be discriminated against because he chose not to get this vaccine is unacceptable. It made him angry. He went about his life, he went to the gym, he's on the swim team, he went and swam at a different pool because he could not access it here. He was not able to access his education, which is truly, truly disgusting to me. Couple weeks later, my children were both, one was in the Little Theater at Central, one was in the auditorium. Once again, their education was taken away from them because they refused to put a piece of paper over their face, which, you can show me your studies that say masks work, I can show you just as many saying that they don't work. And my children, once again, don't get me wrong, many of the teachers were great. They brought them their assignments, but it's not the same. And once again, they lost out on their education. Was it their choice? Yes, but they're standing up for their rights, and I fully supported them. I am a school teacher. I teach second grade. I have been teaching for 22 years. I have never seen in my classroom what I am seeing this year. I have students that will be going to third grade in a couple short months that are not prepared. I would say maybe 10, 15% of my class is where they should be. I have students at a beginning kindergarten level because they were forced out of their education. I have a student back in January who was quarantined three times in a row. He came back to school after winter break for one day, quarantined because his brother had a headache. He had to stay home for 10 days. He came back, his sibling had a, he was back for one day, his sibling had a headache. He had to quarantine again. This child is a selective mute. He doesn't talk in the classroom. The amazing thing, once he was able to unmask, while he hasn't really talked, I can see his facial expressions. He whispers to me when we're alone, he will whisper to me. He's making progress. Forcing these children to cover their faces for a virus that doesn't really affect them, the CDC is quietly taking back some of the deaths. We are, honestly, like, from my experience this year as a teacher, I have never seen anything like the behavior problems, the emotional problems, like, out on the playground, they do not know how to get along. It's insane to me. Like, it's, it's crazy. And I don't think anyone is, pays attention to that. Everything is, you're going to kill grandma, you're going to kill grandma, you're going to kill grandma. But we don't care about our children and what we're doing to their mental health. I, I don't, I, we have talked about moving out of this state. My, I have a friend who teaches in Texas, they don't do this. She's a teacher, she has not worn a mask in a year. Even in the spike of Omicron, it was mask optional, and she said, were there a couple extra cases? Yes, but for the most part, not really. We, we cannot keep doing this to our children because I know, I don't think, if you try to put a mask back on my children, I think we have to move. I don't think they can handle it mentally. Can some kids handle it? Absolutely. So I, I really hope, because in the news circulating, the next new variant is on the way, I really hope we think long and hard about how this affects our children mentally. Because the mental health of our children is, is, it affects them more than the physical of COVID. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. John Walters.
Number one, you mentioned about the direct mailing. Two, you said Lockport Township, did you mean, I mean, some of the school, some of the people pay, are in the homer, some of them are over?
It's all taxpayers.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, you got it.
Okay. The next thing is, I go a lot of public meetings, this is the only meeting I go to where the public comment is split up between agenda and non-agenda items, and the non-agenda items comment is all the way at the end. I think that's a way that you got, I've never seen that anywhere. This is, it seems to me that this is a way to censor speech because you've got some parents here, and they'd like to be home with their kids, and they have to sit here through your whole board meeting in order to make their public comment. I think that's something you need to reassess where you put it up front with the other one, so that people can make their public comments and go home to be with their families and their kids, instead of sitting through the whole board meeting and waiting, what, two hours, whatever it is, before they can make their comment. I think that's a way of silencing people's speech. And the last one is, is back to what I said last month about the board members, a couple, some of the board members, threatening and bullying another board member. And from what I understand, it's still going on, and I'm appealing to the people, the board members that aren't doing this, that they call out the board members that are bullying and threatening this other board member, and make it stop. We're talking, we have a board member here that was elected by the taxpayers, he's answerable to the taxpayers, he's not, was not elected by you, and you don't like it because he doesn't always have the same ideas you guys do, he thinks a little different, and he has his own ideas, which is why he was elected. And it's always good to have a counterpoint of view. And I, since the bullying and threatening hasn't stopped, I'm asking for the board members here that aren't participating in that to call out the other board members that are doing this to him, and, and stop it, because this, he was elected by the taxpayers, not by you board members. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next, we have Reagan Hayes.
Now that the crisis of COVID-19 is starting to subside, I think everybody agrees it's time the focus should shift. Everyone has been too preoccupied with the masks and the health aspect, that the mental health has truly fallen by the wayside. The students' mental health needs to start being addressed immediately. As someone who knows what it's like to struggle with things like anxiety and depression, I can certainly recognize when someone else is experiencing it. I would like to read you a response to an open-ended question on a survey I conducted of LTHS students back in September. This was written six months ago, and it goes like this, quote, "I hate it here, for real. The teachers need to put themselves in the kids' shoes and try to understand how we must feel. I will be crying in class, and my teachers will look me dead in the eyes and not say anything. It's very frustrating, as a teacher will make you feel stupid for simply not understanding something. I get it, I could try harder, but they don't understand that I barely have energy to do anything anymore. So how do they expect me to drop everything to try and understand school? Honestly, school is the last thing on my mind at this point, because I'm more worried about myself and trying to make myself feel something again. But teachers don't understand. It makes me self-frustrated, and I hate them. If COVID never happened, then school would be normal, and I wouldn't be at the place that I am now." End quote. I think anybody with a right mind can recognize the phrase, trying to make myself feel something again. That's pretty standard for someone suffering with depression and very possibly suicidal thoughts. There is a universal truth that's unfortunately becoming more and more true every year, and that is, everybody knows someone who's affected by suicide. I know I know a lot of people, and I also know my handful of people who've attempted it themselves. If everyone I know who struggled with suicide had let suicide succeed, I don't think a single one of my friends would be alive. All of them have struggled severely. This response was written six months ago after less than a month in school. I'm no psychologist, but I'm pretty sure that depression doesn't just go away when it's ignored. I have no idea who wrote this response because my survey was anonymous, but I'm, but I sure hope it wasn't the student that was anonymously mentioned last meeting at this school who tried to commit suicide. I'm well aware that depression, anxiety, a lack of social skills or social awareness, et cetera, are not easy things to fix. I know you don't just take a walk or a breath of fresh air and suddenly have a will to live. I know that mental health is a marathon. I know it's different for everybody, but that doesn't mean it's ever too early to try. It doesn't mean it should go ignored, and it doesn't mean you can't use trial and error to figure out some methods that might help. Just because sports are back doesn't mean there aren't still kids struggling with the side effects of what COVID did. I'm also very disappointed by what student government had to say at the last meeting. They not only ignored the bullying because of the masks happened, but they denied that it ever happened. It's possible it didn't happen to them, but I don't even go here and I heard about it. Not to mention the forced auditorium students that had to go because they didn't want to wear masks. I found out that none of the students that spoke at the board meeting were in the auditorium even for one day that week. Just like our regular government, those students are elected to be representatives. Where were the students that were in the auditorium? Who's speaking for them? I found the phrase easing into not wearing masks offensive to the kids who were victims of the policing of that quote-unquote ease. I know a few kids who have a lot of choice words to describe that week, and easy is not one they would choose. Lastly, I would like to read an excerpt of LTHS's statement of equity posted to the LTHS website on June 5, 2020. It says, "Lockport Township High School District 205 strives for a culture that believes we are at our best when we are together. Implied in the word 'together' is a belief that all are welcomed, all are valued, all have meaning, all are included, all are safe physically, mentally, emotionally, and socially." So when it comes to race, you don't believe in segregation, but when it comes to freedom of choice, you do believe it, and you ignore laws so you can practice it at this school. My previous two years at this school have been very disappointing, and I don't know a lot of students who would disagree with my choice of the word. John F. Kennedy said, "In the long history of the world, only a few generations have been granted the role of defending freedom in its hour of maximum danger. And unfortunately, in more ways than one, my generation is approaching that role, if we've not already reached it."
Next, this is Mr. Brent Porfiliol.
How you doing, board? Thank you, Superintendent, for hearing me for a few minutes. So I'm Italian, I like to cook, and I like to eat. And one of the important things that we all do before we have company over and feed our families is quality of ingredients. I think everybody agrees with me on that. So there were some recent issues with complaints about the food in the lunch program here. So before I jumped the gun, like any other person that's going to speak about a subject, I do my due diligence, and I dove deeper into the issue. So being in local politics, there's a lot of parents I know of LTHS students, so I pulled a lot of them on how their kids felt about the lunches here. Of course, I had three kids that went through the high school as well. I talked to them. I went on Facebook, there's a lot of groups on Facebook that discuss lunch, believe it or not. There's actually an Instagram group that has a daily posting by a young man from the school about the quality of the food and what's offered, and he even gets, gives it a rating of one to 10, believe it or not. So the problem I want to address for the next few minutes is the lunch program. So for my younger son and my older daughter, they had a great, a lot of good things to say about the lunch program back in the day, but the drop-off seems to have been a couple of years ago from the quality of the lunches that have been here. That's kind of the dividing line. I don't know if we had a new person that was providing the food services at that time, or if the quality and scope of the food services went down, I don't know. But that's the issue I wanted to address. So the USDA evidently has a national school lunch program that establishes the lunch guidelines, and they pass it on to the states. And the Illinois State Board of Education took that, those dietary requirements, made a little booklet, 30 pages long, on what you're supposed to have for your school lunches. So I said, okay. So there's a, there's a chart, this is Exhibit C1 from the United States Department of Agriculture, that talks about what the lunch program for high school students should be. And so what I did was I said, okay, let me pull up the lunch menu for the month of March, and let me compare that lunch menu with the requirements of the USDA, and let me see if they match. That was the first thing I looked at. So they don't match. I'll try not to be too boring with this. So one cup of fruit, four cups of vegetables, dark green, red, orange, beans and peas, and starchy. That's the four different types of vegetables that are supposed to be served every day. You got two ounces of grains, you have two ounces of meat, and then you have, of course, milk. So what I found in the lunch program was meat was not served every day, grains were not served every day, only one vegetable was served every day, and one- grains were not served every day, only one vegetable was served every day and one fruit. So we're not meeting the basic minimum requirements of the USDA. So that was my first issue. That's the problem. We have to find a way to solve it. Okay? The second thing is, who provides the food service? So I was told Quest is the person, is the company that provides the food service. So I went online on a blog to get Quest reviews and they weren't very good. They weren't very good. So basically, you know, you get what you pay for. They must have been a little bitter. I don't know if it was a quality-based selection or if it was based on price, but it should have been based on quality. We pay enough taxes in this school district where we should get a better option of food. So I talked about ingredients. I don't know if the school has a checks and balances for the quality of the food before it's unpacked and put in front of the students to eat. I've seen a lot of pictures on these groups from students in this school and from my kids of rotten fruit and uncooked chicken. And there's been many days my daughter came home with stomachaches. And she does, never gets stomachaches with my cooking. God bless her. But that's an issue with health. And somebody else was talking about fruits and vegetables before. So there's something, there's something wrong. There's a disconnect here on what we're supposed to be providing the students and what we're actually giving the students. So I'm asking for the next school year, because it's too late now. I'm asking for the next school year and it's going to be an election year for a few of you. I want to make sure that we address the school lunch issue with maybe providing a higher level of scope of services, a quality check on the food before it's given to the students. And also, this menu needs to be redone to make sure it meets the minimum requirements, which I think is, is kind of important. And I think that's, I think that's everything I wanted to say. So the USDA National Lunch School Program, that's the one that I'm quoting. That's the one that, that the Illinois State Board of Education says you have to follow. So I'm asking you to, to rebid services next fall with a different company. Quest had their chance, they failed. So we need somebody else that's not going to fail. And I thank you for your time.
Next, we have Ms. Christina McCarthy.
Hello. The last time I was here, Mr. McBride told me that I had to respect him. And again, this is exactly why you were called Bobby. Because you don't respect. When people are talking, you're, you're looking down. You could, you could go back and watch this on live and make your notes. These people leave their families, they, they leave their work early to come to this. They aren't public speakers. They don't, they aren't comfortable speaking, but they do it anyway because they care about their children. And they're trying to fight for their children's mental health that supposedly you guys care so much about. You don't. So, and you said in your, in the beginning of the meeting, mutual respect. That's not mutual respect. You don't look at people when they talk to you. That's not respect. I demand respect. I'm a taxpayer here. My son, my son's going to be coming here next year and I'm scared for my son to come here. I don't want my son to come here. I get messages, I get, I have had hundreds of messages throughout this school year from parents and children that go to this school scared to speak up about the masks and everything else. Nobody should be scared to speak up. Why should they be scared? That's a bully mentality and that is exactly what you're acting like. I think you should be fired. You are the day-to-day. You allow children to be, to be put in an auditorium, treated differently than other children. What do you think that does to their mental health? How do you, how would you feel if it was, you know, if it was a bunch of black kids put in there or Asian kids put in there? You're, you're segregating. That's, that's the bottom line. You are segregating children and you did that. You allowed that. And that is wrong. On so many levels, it is wrong. You care so much about mental health, stand up against that. You, all of you are in charge of firing him. I did, I think he should be fired. Y'all are, you're, you're all going to be up for election sooner or later. When you were elected, we were all asleep. Now we're awake. So you better buck up and do something because this is not okay. This is not okay to segregate children in a room or only vaccinated kids are quarantined. That's not okay. That's not okay. And if you all think that's okay, y'all deserve to go away and not be in the position you're in. So that is what it is. Start making some, some heavy decisions here because none of us are going to tolerate it any longer. And like I said last time, I will knock on every door in this district to remove the board because I don't think you're doing what you're, the right thing for these children. Again, I have had calls, I have had parents cry to me about mental health and what their kids are going through. And I, I can't, I mean, it literally keeps me up at night. And the fact that you people, it doesn't bother at all, is mind-blowing to me. You have people, I, you have people that are up here all the time talking about their children's mental health and you guys, you don't even owe them enough respect to look them in the eyes. I think that's super disrespectful. And I just, I can't believe that you all think it's okay. So, you know, election year is coming up and we're coming for your seats. And then, once we get enough on there, your job might be in jeopardy. So with that, I'm done.
All right, Mr. Jay Roddy.
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 I think you guys. Do I have to talk in this thing? Hello? All right, so I'll get right to it. At the last board meeting, actually at, all of the board meetings that I've been at, when I've asked questions or just made statements, I routinely do get an email answer or reply from Mr. McBride on the board's behalf. I didn't get anything after the last meeting, so maybe, because I did review the tape. I guess I need to be a little bit more clear with my question. I want to be as transparent as possible. On 2/24, February 4th, 2022, a TRO was issued in regards to the mask mandate. On 2/7/22, District 205 joined the governor's appeal. When was it decided for District 205 to join the appeal? Who decided to join the appeal? If it was the board, I want to know which members voted which way. If it was the superintendent, I want to know what gave him the ability to do so without board approval or a board vote. If it was the District 205 legal representation, please provide me with an agreement, the agreement that the district has with this attorney that allows him or her to join litigation without the approval from the superintendent or a board vote. If it is District 205's insurance company, please provide me with the agreement that the district has with the insurance group that allows them to join litigation without approval from the superintendent or a board vote. Also, why did the board join? Why did the board join the appeal that went before the appellate court? But yet, you did not join the appeal that went before the Illinois Supreme Court? Both appeals, which were voted down. That is as transparent and as clear as I can get. Okay? Now you guys can give me those answers or I guess you can reply and tell me I have to foil them. But I think everybody here would like to know. Because there was never a special board meeting. Was this something when you guys went to decide to join the TRO to go against the parents, that you said, hey, if we lose it, we're going to automatically join an appeal if there's an appeal? Who, when, and where? I want to know how, who voted which way. Thank you.
Angel Shape.
Mr. McBride, Board. I was originally going to ask some questions about transparency and make some statements, but obviously, everybody's covered that. I would like to make a couple of observations about policies and procedures. And maybe it's just things that I'm not clear of, that I'm not finding in the handbook or, or on the website. But a couple of things I've run into this year with my child and some other kids. First of all, this has nothing to do with like a safety issue or anything. I've noticed that the graduation requirements. So they could take early graduation in January. There's a lot of kids that, for whatever reason, don't want to graduate early. And like, my son's one of them, doesn't want to graduate early. Has, you know, he's got all his classes. But I just don't understand why it's not an option. Like, they can graduate in January, but why can't they graduate after three years? I'm wondering if that's like something I'm missing that's a new state requirement that they have to be in. I know that they're not allowed to take, like in summer school, some of the classes are only offered if they failed and they have to like retake. There are certain classes that they're not able to get so they can't fulfill their requirements, which I think is just, it's not in every school. So I don't know, like I said again, if I'm missing it and it's a, it's a new state thing or... So that was one of the things that I would like, maybe you guys can address with all the parents because it's come up, a lot of people have been asking me. The other thing is, I will agree with Mr. Williams. My son doesn't use the bathroom once during the entire day. I don't know how he does it. He refuses to go into the bathrooms because he's like, no matter where I go, he's like, I have to go out of my way to go somewhere where they're not vaping. I don't want to get busted. I don't want to be in a room with somebody that's doing something wrong. I'd rather just not go to the bathroom. So that's not really healthy to just like hold it all day. And I'm like, that is the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. Everybody knows you don't vape, like you have really bad asthma. And he's like, I don't care, I don't want to be around it. So that, that is something that's important and nobody, like, everybody's worried about, oh, is your kid on his cellphone? I don't care whose kid is on their cellphone as long as they're not doing it, you know, anything wrong. If they're doing something on their cellphone, like they're playing a game or doing something stupid, they're only harming themselves and their own education. But like the kids that are like, they're not handling like the vaping situation and everything, that's kind of affecting everybody's kids. So my son got injured a few weeks, actually a month and a half ago. I got a phone call from the school nurse. I have Jonah in the office. All right. What's he, like, I'm like, what's he in the office for? She's, she's like, I have him in the nurse's office. He got hurt, he's fine, he's already back in class. He didn't want me to call you. I'm like, okay. So she said, "A shelf in welding class collapsed on his foot with heavy metal and like about a hundred and something pounds of metal fell on his toe." She's like, "He refused ice because he wanted to get back to class. He wanted to get back to class because he said, 'I can walk.'" And he's like, "I need to get back to class because they were doing something important." So we went to the doctor. I don't know what the incident report situation is here, but I finally, I had to call the nurse and I said, "I didn't get an incident report or anything. I need it for the insurance." She thought I meant like I wanted to file against the school's insurance. I'm like, "I'm not going against the school for anything. I need it for my insurance." Like, there has to be an incident report filled out somewhere. So I don't know if it's, I couldn't find it in the handbook. I don't know if it's the nurse's job to request it from the teacher, if the teacher's job. So then I get this incident report finally, they backdated it, and it's filled out completely wrong and it's nothing that the nurse said to me on the phone, which was a really, really big issue for me because all I want to do is let the doctor put it in my son's file. And then the other question they said to me was, well, he did, the, the teacher asked my son, he's like, "Well, it wasn't broken, right?" Well, no, but he lost his nail, had to have his toe drained. It was really gross. And nobody was coming after the school for anything. All we wanted was proper procedure followed. Nobody followed proper procedure. And I didn't want to get anybody in trouble, so we let it go, let it go. And I just told the doctor, I'm like, okay, here's the deal. I'm just going to pay this bill and we're not going to put it through the insurance. But again, had it been somebody else that got injured worse than something like that and it was nobody's fault, it's not like another kid hurt my son, it's not like my son hurt himself. It was just a weird thing, a piece of equipment fell, right? But there's got to be some kind of procedures in place. So those are just like the main things I wanted to ask about. And then the only other thing was when they were up here talking about like the social media and stuff, do we sign a disclaimer anywhere? I know we do sign something that says like, at certain events, your, your child may be used in advertising or whatever. They'll say like, can you sign away on that? But I don't remember ever seeing anything that they might go live on Twitter or Facebook or Instagram. And I'm not, my kid's not on a lot of social media, but I don't, I don't tell him he can't go on it. But they're actually, one of his friend's parents came to my house when they were a little bit younger and said, "Our kid's never on social media. Make sure your kid doesn't post anything of our son." So I think it would be a good thing to clarify with the parents. If you guys are going live on Facebook, when all our kids were at that St. Baldur's event, the Honor Society kids were all there. There are some kids' parents that will not be happy if their kid was on a live video. So maybe something you guys want to clarify, it might be a legal issue. That's all. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. James Shape.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for having me. I had a, well, a concern, basically. When I came in today, I was handed this, this readout. See, Section 2, Board of Education, 2:2030, "Public Participation at School Board Meetings and Petitions to the Board." Now, I'm assuming that's, you know, that's just your basic, this is how we're going to act. You got the five minutes on there. Obviously, the board can, can reduce that whenever they want. It doesn't violate the Open Meetings Act or anything like that. But what concerned me was the Section 8, "Visitors and Conduct on School Property." This is a, this is a school board meeting. And basically, what my concern is the language. Because we're not really visitors. I mean, we are, but we're not. This is our, this is our right to be here. We're stakeholders and taxpayers and we are participating in a meeting. So we should be participants and not visitors. So I don't think we fall under the "Visitors and Conduct on School Property" guidelines. Now, when it says unsportsmanlike, vulgar and obscene language, obviously, that's, you know, proper etiquette, okay? But according to New York Times v. Sullivan, okay, the New York Supreme, New York, I'm sorry, the Supreme Court, New York Times v. Sullivan, public comments and public officials are described as basically, not to get into the weeds of it, but basically, I can say anything I want and hurt your feelings and it's okay. Now, the only thing it says is there is no physical threats, obviously. So when you're, when you're putting this language in here, you are public officials, okay? Elected public officials, appointed or what have you with the, with the superintendent. If we are really angry about a situation, which now, the last couple of years, it's been very contentious and it's very hyper-politicized and there's politics involved and we don't like that. So we're going to be mad and we're going to, we're going to say things that you don't like. Okay? What the basic concern is, when I read this, it sounds like you're going to get, you're kind of going to get ready to like start throwing people out. I'm not saying that that's true, but I just don't really understand the, the language in here. To, to the second grade teacher's point, you cannot provide any proof whatsoever that masks do anything to stop a respiratory virus. You can't do it, you never could do it. You can't do it tomorrow, you didn't do it yesterday. There is absolutely no proof whatsoever. So when, when it comes back down to Omicron number 52 and you want to order masks on the kids again, it, you should probably look into that a little bit better than you did last time because common sense is not a virtue on this board. There's a lot of very highly educated people here and very little common sense. There is no scientific evidence whatsoever that masks did anything or will do anything for a respiratory virus such as COVID. That's basically all I have. I was just, I would like, I would like to just encourage you to not take any rash decisions when it comes to basic free speech language, okay? We're, sometimes we're going to be here, we're going to be... we're going to be upset. Sometimes, we're going to be cordial, but like I said, according to the Supreme Court, anything less than threats is okay. Thank you.
Next, we have a Ms. Catherine Pareda.
I would like to ask with the Board's permission if I can bring my daughter up here and speak. This is regards to summer school and online learning, and as a student here, this would be good for her to be here too, to speak. Is that, is that all right, or I will speak for her? Okay.
Hi. Sorry, excuse my voice. I've been with choirs performing and singing all week.
Do you want, do you want a water?
I've had a water. Thank you so much. I'm not here to complain. I just want to bring up the concerns of students who are affected by summer school being fully in person, and you're only able to miss two days. I'm someone who's very involved in the school, and I've, as you can, as I said before, I like to be in choir at other classes other than my social studies. I know that history's important to know, and you have to know that for your state requirements and to graduate high school, but as someone who I want to go into an engineering field, that's not really necessary for me in particular, and I know that's the case with a lot of students, yet it's still a requirement for us to graduate. I'm not saying it's not important. What I'm saying is, I need a way for, and so many other students need a way for us to take these classes and not have to worry about our summers being solely focused on being in school. Like, with mental health being mentioned earlier, we never get a break. Like, we are here at the school. Like, I'm here at the school till like eight or seven some days. I'm going to be here probably till ten today, which is fine. I'm hoping I get home before curfew, because I drove myself here, but, yeah, but I'm just wanting a way that I can take these classes. Like, if we, we had an online version of this class last year, and it was amazing. I was able to do all of my other activities over the summer. I was able to work over the summer. You know how great it would be if kids were able to work over the summer and save money for college, and then they don't have to worry about like school as much? Like, this is a break. Summer's supposed to be a break, and you're not supposed to be in school. You're supposed to be able to rewind, take some time for yourself, and yes, focus on a class online would be great, and you can go at your own pace. You can get ahead if you want, or you can take a day just to relax and then go back. Personally, I wanted to take a camp, summer camp at U of I, but I also have to take a social studies requirement, but, and that will be the second semester version of it, but I can't do that because I can't miss two days during the summer school where I have to be in person. And I have many, many fronts. I'm not heard a single student happy about summer school being moved to fully in person, because they all have other requirements. My Girl Scout troop, they all wanted to volunteer all summer and host a camp to help the daisies and like do a summer camp that way. They can't do that with summer school, and so they have to pick and choose. And a lot of people are then going to have to rearrange their schedule for their junior and senior year, because they were banking on summer school being fully online again, so that they can do both. I have another friend who's a Boy Scout who wanted to do the same thing. I, a lot, all, like, a lot of kids who are in the arts, like band and choir and art classes, they all want to do the same thing, because they all want to go to college and pursue a career in the arts, and they all want to do like summer musicals and be able to like grow in other ways. A lot of kids want to work over the summer, so they're able to start saving money for college and their future, but they can't do that if they're at the school. So, all I'm asking is that, can you guys consider a way that there's another opportunity for us to take these classes other than over the summer? I mean, like, it's hard to make room in a schedule. Like, I want to go into engineering, so I'm taking double sciences next year, along with like a choir class. So, if I really needed to, I could always try to fit it in there, but then it sets me back trying to go into college, because colleges are not looking at my social studies. They're looking at, did I take sciences? Because I want to go into a specific field, and many kids know this, so they try to take them over the summer. And then when they take them over the summer, their GPA gets lowered, because we don't offer an AP version of it outside of school. And there's so many kids who would like pay to take these classes elsewhere. Like, I took classes at JJC because I can't get enough tech classes in my classes at Lockport, because I don't have enough room in my schedule. So, I'm just asking for like another possibility for us to take these two requirements for social studies. Like, it's just putting such a roadblock in so many students' lives, like, and, yeah, like, a zero, a lot of high schools have zero hours. We don't have one of those, unfortunately. Like, I, there's a lot of kids that could benefit from that.
So, what she's referring to are the summer advancement classes. So, there's four of those classes, so if you guys don't know what she's referring to, oh, you do know. Okay. So, that's what she's specifically referring to. These are the overachievers who are in a lot of clubs and a lot of activities, asking to take an online version of those four classes.
And I know when people ask for an online class, it's not out of laziness. This is actually them wanting to do more things. They want to like go out, and the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts want to go volunteer more. I want to go take other technology courses, and it's just, and some people want to work more, but you can't do that with being stuck at the school for extra time, and never having that time for yourself to grow in your other ways. Do you have any questions?
Did very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then to our East and Central reports.
Thank you, everyone. What we wanted to do is talk to you guys a little bit more about the athletics, but as you saw this winter, we had a multitude of students that we honored, which has been great. When Dr. Green and I go places, they're like, "Oh, Lockport, you guys really have done a phenomenal job on cleaning up and state titles and state trophies this year." So, we are really proud of our students. We had an amazing winter season. We had three SWSC titles, three regional titles, three sectional titles, third-place state finish, and two state championships just in this winter season alone. So, that's not counting the fall season and two individual state champions. So, we are really proud of our kids. We're not going to go through and read all of the spring previews, but you see in there that spring sports are underway, and they are starting to compete. We're so very excited about that. With our activities, we're very proud of our science club, the Pilots. They actually met with the Argon scientists, and then in May, they're actually going to go through and present their findings from the experiments that they're conducting to the scientific community here at LTHS, and also Argon's annual meeting. On March 12th, a lot of you have been following our Acapella group, Vocal Point, and Off the Record. They did a phenomenal job, and Vocal Point actually placed third overall, qualifying them for the National Wild Card round, and they have a chance to compete in New York City for the national competition in April. National Honor Society did a phenomenal job in participating in Read Across America. Our Student Equity Action Committee attended the Black Teen Summit at JJC on March 3rd, and our Wonder Guard also placed second in the Color Guard competition hosted at TF South. As you saw tonight, we are very proud of our third-place state finishers for our Special Olympics basketball team, and I'm really proud of our entire student body and the wonderful St. Baldur's event that was held. It was sponsored by student government, but it was phenomenal to see so many of our students come out. They had the, our student leadership group decorated the gym and really support our Special Olympics athletes. And then this year, we didn't have as many head shaves for St. Baldur's. I think a lot of our boys like the long hair flow, so we didn't have as many participants, but we did have a great turnout and great support. Student government's doing a phenomenal job of fundraising, selling donuts. We actually put pie in several teaches, teacher spaces over at Central. That was a big hit and a good fundraiser, so we're really proud of what the students are doing for that.
Carrie and I, again, wanted to thank the Board of Education for giving us the opportunity to recognize our students as we do. We don't want to just kind of bypass the fact that it almost seems like every month, we are recognizing success at the state level, not just athletics, but activities and academics as well, and this evening was a great example of that, as we had our national merit finalists, we had our Special Olympics basketball team, as Carrie said, and we had our, our wrestling team as well that earned third. So, again, thank you for giving us that opportunity to celebrate that student's success. To summarize Mr. Bartley's student behavior report, you could see, as we had spoke on, on the last couple of months with our electronic device policy, we had an increased amount. We saw those incidents go down a little bit as we continue to try to be consistent with enforcing that policy. You could also see that we did have some major incidents that did increase, including fighting, drug use, and vaping. So, we will continue to work, as, as a team, with our dean's office, with our guidance office, and, and the teachers as well, to continue to work with our students who make those poor choices, to ensure that not only they're receiving consequences, but also to ensure that those restorative practices that have been discussed before, the interventions, when they return to school, if it's one of those situations where they're not in school, so that we can partner with the parents, and we can partner with the student. So, obviously, the goal would be for that, that choice is not made again. I also wanted to mention and highlight Mr. Bartley, and I appreciate him mentioning our partnership with Rosecrance and the clinician that we do have on site weekly to help us with some of those situations. That is a great partnership that we have with them, as we continue to work with our students and our families. The Student Behavior Committee just recently finished up their meetings as well, and we will soon have the recommendations from the Student Behavior Committee. You can see the attendance for this past month was just a shade under ninety-five percent, at ninety-four point eight percent. Also additionally, there were two overnight reports that were submitted, one that actually just spoke, just took place this past weekend with our varsity boys baseball team in, near the Collinsville area, and then one as we look forward to the end of April, Mr. Mullins and our Skills USA students in the state competition that they have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we just have those overnight field trips?
I don't know if there's any board, you know, that's just to advise the board of students being overnight, and, you know, one already occurred. We had a new agenda beforehand, very successful, I believe, three and O on the weekend. And then Skills USA, really amazing. That's an academic competition that also has a national competition. We often break out, and I can believe they're all at a national competition, but it's in Peoria, and it is engineering. Includes engineering, robotics, design, architecture, CAD. They will be heading out the, the, next week, that, that final week of spring break.
All right. Moving on to our district reports, maintenance report.
Maintenance report, one of the most busy times of the year as we gear up for the summer. We are experiencing some supply chain shortages, some contractors who, because they're experiencing supply chain shortages, are having some, some difficulty. But this is the time we get ready to toss the whole school, you know, all of our facilities, from the transport center to Central, inside-out to clean. We did, the Board approved a memorandum of understanding for DLA to investigate the district building, what to do with that building. Originally, it hasn't been touched since nineteen ninety-nine. DLA gave us a number of conceptual designs. It became very clear to us, as I put in your board update, that rather than just doing a one-off, actually, the most expensive option seemed to be just wrapping the building and trying to prove some of the HVAC in the building, is to really look at that as a total, spend the time of putting our shoulders into a total district facilities. We have our transport center, we have Central, East, that building and its relationship to the stadium. We have our property on Cedar Road, and really spend some time looking at the, the total composition of our physical plan, and then also what our physical plan can add to the community. You know, we started with the A fields, adding facilities that would benefit us, for sure, but also facilities that would benefit the community and add multipurpose use there as well. We're working with a company called Amoresco. They do analysis, business case, they're performance contractors. They propose to all sorts of organizations what your facility's plan could be. The way the performance contracting works is, they don't receive a fee until a board adopts one of their plans. And so, they're helping us understand, for example, what's the long-term cost of Central as a vintage facility that's hosting a modern-day group of a thousand freshmen every year. Lots going on. You see a long list at East Campus of just taking care of, of the facility, and the same at Central, just making sure we're getting life safety work, we're getting hardscaping work, doing, done fields this between now and, I'd say, October is your high season, isn't it, Mr. Thompson? If it needs to be fixed, it's fixed, painted, cleaned, improved, raked, it is. So, we're entering into that season. Any, any, any questions? And a season of really analyzing, after our demographic forecast, what kind of facilities can we offer over the next ten years? Any questions? Do you want me to jump into item number two?
Sure.
Mrs. Lopez, this is, you know, as always, any kind of fund transfers that we complete, capital project expenditure, interfund transfer summaries. These are all summaries of life safety, offices, and information services center. These are the multi-year roofing repairs that we need primarily here at East, and then the East Campus auditorium lighting and audio visual. We've hit a snag there with bidders. We might have to forestall that project until the middle of next year. Things are very tight to get contractors mainly because of supplies, and so those are all interfund transfers. And then announcements?
Announcements, yes.
Okay, just a few announcements. Really interesting for board members, Reality Store experience at Central Campus, really for the first time since the pandemic, opening up the Reality Store. This is really to give freshmen an, an experience with what is adult living, what is adulting all about. And that's really all day Wednesday, so if you're a board member and you want to drop in, please just let me know, and, and we'll make that happen.
When is this?
It's Wednesday, from nine forty-five to the end of the school day, Mr. Navarro. So, even if you come in for an hour or a half hour just to do a tour around to see, it doesn't have to be a whole day thing. Spring break is next week. We have holidays on April fifteenth and April eighteenth. We don't have school. Speaking with Mrs. Lopez Caniva, we have a holiday on April eighteenth. That is a board meeting, and Mrs. Lopez Caniva proposed moving it to April twenty-fifth, so that we're not having a board meeting on a holiday. So, change those schedules, Monday, April twenty-fifth, as we customarily do when, when school's not in session. And then also, Career Week at East Campus. I believe everybody at this table, maybe a few people in the audience, have careers, and we are looking for speakers to share their career experiences. That's a whole week-long experience here at East Campus. Our guidance department is running it, and we could use speakers. It doesn't mean you're speaking a whole day. Might be just one or two sessions, but what is it that you do? But most importantly, what students really need to know is, what education got you to the position that, that you're in? What do you have to do to prepare to be working with the railroad, to work in IT, to teach Spanish, or be a high school administrator, to work in, you know, any field?
About school board.
What?
How about like getting to like school board?
It's a little bit more career. I don't know if I would say that your career, although Mr. Lewandowski has got a career, you know, he's been on since nineteen ninety-nine, but, you know. It's just my public service. Right, public service as a career person could be.
I was kind of leading into the.
Yeah, really interesting topic, right? You know, could be a really interesting topic. So, those are the announcements. Motion to adjourn.
Well, you got to make the announcement for them to subscribe to our Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, and Twitter.
So, please, if you are at home, subscribe to our Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. Be sure to do it.
And YouTube.
And YouTube, Jim.
Okay, now we can adjourn.
All right, and I second it. So, all right. All in favor?